I would like to call together the March 18th Newport Beach Council Study Session. Roll call, please.
It's March 11th, Mayor?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. And the record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Didn't wait long to screw up, did I? We'll go on with current business, clarification of items on the consent calendar.
I have none. I will be pulling number five at the meeting.
Councilman Petros?
I have none.
I have none. Village Daigle?
I have none.
And?
None for me.
And Mr. Curry?
None for me.
All right, and none for me. So we'll move right into item number two, Balboa Village Theater. So, Mr. Mayor and council members, this is an item that's on today's study session as well as tonight's regular meeting. And you have a staff report in front of you, but I think it probably would be best to hand this over to Steve Beasley and Don Hecht to make the presentation as representative of the Balboa Village Theater and the foundation. And I know that, I think, Councilmember Hen will want to make some comments as well. All right, thank you. Please.
Mr. Mayor, council, my name is Don Hecht, H-E-C-H-T, and I'm presently the chairman of the Balboa Village, yeah, Balboa Village Theater. I'll get used to this. It's been a while since I stood in front of a classroom, so. You have before you the documents that we've prepared, and I would like to introduce Steve Beasley. He's the CEO and president and in charge of operations. He'll explain to you the details of what we are proposing.
Mr. Mayor, city council, thank you for giving us this time today to have this discussion with you. Thank you. All right. You know, in school, they teach you that it's not enough to have the right answer, that you also have to show your work. And so what we're here today is to show our work to you, discuss our work. We think we've arrived at the right answer, but that's for you to decide. So we want to provide you with the information that we've been gleaning over time from the community, as well as our experts that we've secured in terms of putting together a whole vision for this theater as we go forward. I want to quickly run through some slides, but I want to get to questions as quickly as we possibly can. Just a couple slides for background. You have some materials in front of you that can fuel our discussion. Certainly, we can go off the materials if you wish, but let me just go through a couple slides with you. We have retained one of the top research and planning arts and entertainment firms in the country to help us put together a plan and a vision for this facility. So some of these documents are a result of their work, some are collaborative, and some are our own work. Certainly, the purpose of this project is to build community support. So you have in front of you what we've been working on for the last 10 or 12 weeks in terms of that, and that is our presence in the Newport Beach Independent, not just for marketing or public relations sake, but is, again, to show our work, what we've been working on, to bring the community along each step of the way as we move forward. So when this theater opens, people know exactly what happened every step along the way. So you have this in front of you. We may reference it, or some of the answers to your questions may be in here as well. It's always good to have a comparable. Doing things first is a good thing, but when something's already been done well somewhere else, you certainly want to capitalize on that. And along with the research firm, we found several comparable facilities that are operating very well across the country. We established some criteria on which ones to pick. I want to showcase one to you today of the four that were cited by the, by the research firm, and that is the Fairfield Theater Company in Fairfield, Connecticut. When you do see our business plan, you'll recognize a lot of the information was taken from Fairfield, because, again, their organization that's been operating 10 years in the fashion that we would like to operate on this other coast. So you have before you a seven-page summary of everything from their profit and loss statement, to their programming, to their keys to success, what they would recommend to us. So you have that document in front of you, but you see up on the screen a facts in brief, and you'll see that the black box idea that we're presenting to you today as a facility plan is not truly our own, but one that's not only embraced by the Fairfield Theater, but well across the country, including Samweli Theater, Founder's Hall, and up at the Performing Arts Center. So our proposal for a black box theater is one that's used around the country and has been quite successful. And with that, we provided for you some schematics. These are top-level. Certainly, more detail needs to come forward. There's no doubt about it, but without kind of a 30,000-foot vision, it's very hard to explain. So you have this in your proposal as well. This is our conception of how the theater would be laid out. You have one more in front of you, that is the main elevation of the front of the theater that I don't have on a slide here, but basically, the facade in the front of the theater would stay as-is, except for the addition of a new marquee, but we can talk about that. So we talked about this idea of business planning, and certainly, finding industry comps is very important, but even equally as important to that is surveying our community to see what do they want, what do they need, and how do we best serve them. So one of the steps of our business planning was to survey the community, and that was done by AMS, the planning firm, independent of us. They surveyed the community on several questions, participation, motivation, lifestyles, all those types of things, and we have a comprehensive report that we will eventually submit to you, but I want to highlight a couple of the slides and the responses by our community. This is very important, because we are in a renovation phase before we ever operate the theater, so we wanted to know, do people even want this facility renovated? And we previewed this on the back of the Indy several weeks ago. It got good response from people, and you see the statistics. I don't need to go through them, but I think we can rest assured that our community is in support of this theater renovating and opening once again. But not only to open, what do they want to see? So in your, in your Indy packet also is one of the responses to the question, because, again, it's not good enough for an operator to program to their own likes and wants and needs. You have to respond to what the community wants to see. So we asked them in depth, what would they be willing to come see, and we asked them several questions, including, what would you willing to pay to come see what you want to see? All that data is in now, and the research firm has submitted it to us, but here's one snapshot of what would be offered to people, and what was their level of interest in coming to the Balboa Village Theater to see those types of activities. Let me say, for Don and myself particularly, that this venture to open a theater is a very exciting one and very good, but I, for one, wouldn't have experienced half the excitement for opening the theater had not this theater been in the context of a greater cultural and economic development that is Balboa Village. The, the way the theater can contribute to the village and its perpetuation is more exciting than anything that will ever be on stage. And so I would pledge, as the operator, that this theater would never be a thing unto itself. It would always be in service of not only the people of Newport Beach, but the perpetuation of what is called the historic heart of Newport Beach. And so I read every document that I could, and this one jumped out at me, and that is the Balboa Village Master Plan. And in the brand vision statement, the plan was kind enough to recognize the Balboa Performing Arts Theater as a vital contributor to the village, but even greater than that, in the vision statement, if you go to the economic development portion of the plan, you'll see that the city has pledged support of the Balboa Village Theater as a cultural amenity. And if you read quickly down to the bottom, it says, "The project is at a critical fundraising juncture, and the city should be open to lease modifications if needed, as well as provide necessary support to assist in the fundraising strategies and offer responsive city services as needed during the construction phase." These words truly undergird our proposal to you and the lease modification proposal, and that really is what you have in front of you. That was our proposal to you, that outside of the facility and the program, that is the meat and potatoes of the relationship between the foundation and the city. And so I will not be inclined to go through each bullet point, because you have, and the public has, this excerpt in the full report, but I wanted to put it up there for demonstration, as well as if we need to go back to something, as well as the financial investment plan, which we can go into. I'll be happy to provide a little bit more in-depth analysis of, for you. So having said that, I went very fast. There's many more details, but I certainly want to have time for your questions. Again, we thank you for your time today and your attention to this matter. Don and I can both say that we are truly committed to this project, and we think we have the right answer, and we're willing to show our work.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question on the Fairfield, is it?
Yes.
Theater. What is the nearest theater that would be similar in that area, do you know? I mean, I was just thinking, we have four theaters within 10 miles that do different things, but similar.
You mean the nearest theater to Fairfield? I don't know.
Yeah, are they, it's one thing if you're the only game in town. It's not quite the same if you won games, I say, 10 miles away, there's a very similar game. So I was just wondering if you have that information.
I don't know all the amenities around Fairfield or that area. I could certainly come back with those answers.
Thank you.
Were you speaking of theaters around here, similar to the black box concept?
Yeah, I was thinking, you've got the Barclays, Laguna.
Yeah, she's talking about theaters in the area here that are black box type.
No, no, but I was just asking whether Fairfield was the only game in town, or whether there were, it was like us, where they had a lot of competition, just to give me a way of evaluating what they were doing. Thank you.
The closest ones to us here, I think, Arch Coast College just opened up one, and Vanguard University has one, that I'm aware of. Other council comments?
So you're anticipating a partnership with the community and with the city? Is that kind of how you envision things?
Yeah, that's our proposal, yes.
Okay. Right now, you have a board of one, unless things have changed, that it doesn't really reflect broad community support. And it seems to me, if the city is going to contribute funds, then we should have representation on the board, and not just have a one-person board, but really, to have an effort where the city is involved and participating.
When there was a change in plan, we discovered that the old ideas no longer worked. Therefore, we needed a new approach, and I was elected to be the person to lead that new approach. What you have in front of you is that new approach with a partnership. I do not intend to be a sole operator. My intention is to get this off the ground and get it going. Once we have council approval to start something like this, then our next effort will be to populate it with a board that will oversee the construction, oversee the programs, oversee the fundraise and the development, and move forward. And that's the next stage.
And how do you feel about having city representation? It may be a couple of council members, but how do you feel about having city representation on the board should we give funds?
Never thought of it. Never thought of it. Certainly, it's under consideration, but, again, the board is, would be self-sustaining, so the board would make that decision.
Councilman Hen?
Yeah, I would, we do need to think about Brown Act issues associated with having council members on the board, so we'd need to think that through. But I took your comment to say that you're not against the idea of having city representation in some respect on the board of the Theater Foundation.
No, my main purpose was to get this off the ground and help put it together with Steve and to determine the feasibility of it. We have done that. We've done our homework over the last six, seven months, so we know it's all feasible. Next step is to create a board that will be self-sustaining. That board is going to determine what goes on. If you feel, obviously, that there is a contingency that you must have somebody on, I guess the board would have to entertain that.
Let me, let me see if I can crystallize this issue just a little more clearly here. So with council's indulgence, I'd like to make just a few comments. First thing I'd like to do is thank you, Don and Steve, for carrying this ball forward. My thanks also goes to the prior board of the Balboa Theater Foundation for the work that they did to bring this project forward. We've had quite a bit of community support and, and impetus for this. I think we'll probably hear from the Balboa Village Merchants Association at some point about their enthusiasm for the project. I want to emphasize one thing at the start here, though. What we're talking about for this evening is not final approval to proceed on the part of the city. We're talking about approval in concept for an approach to getting the theater built and open that has conditions attached to it before final approval would be granted. And so, you know, no final decision will be made here at this study session, and the conceptual approach will be, I hope, agreed to later this evening, subject to conditions. Just take a second here. The last time we had a study session on this issue, what was before us was a $6 million project. This one, we think, what's before us today, is around a $4 million project. We had a $3 million city commitment of funding before. Now, the city commitment of funding is in the range of $2 million, and I'll come back to that point in a moment. There was no rent before and no interest on the loan. Now, we're talking about at least some amount of rent payable to the city. We were talking about the need to raise $3 million last time around. Now, we're talking about the need to raise $2 million, and in addition, at this time, this time around, the $2 million to be raised would be completely unencumbered. It would be cash in the bank, unencumbered. I just want to make sure that there's a clear articulation of this approval in concept, and this is in my mind here, and I think, Don, when I finish, if you would express a point of view on it, I would appreciate it. We're talking about a, an approval that is conditioned upon, an approval for the city to proceed to do the renovation of the building and be the landlord, with the Balboa Theater as the operating entity that would be responsible for operations, both financially and in, in practice, in management, going forward. So that's the fundamental conceptual approach. Final approval by the city to that conceptual approach would occur later. Tonight, we would have a conceptual approval of the concept and the approach. Final approval to come later, conditioned upon $2 million in the bank, unencumbered. Due diligence on the cost estimate for the city. We currently, we currently are estimating $2 million, in my mind and in conversation with staff. That could be as much as $3 million, but what we want to do is do the due diligence so that the city has confidence in that cost estimate before final approval is granted. So that's condition two, due diligence on the cost. Condition three would be a full-blown, professionally-written business plan, I believe, by AMS, which is a well-regarded consultant. That would include financial projections and a very good articulation of the need for this facility, the programming and, and its mode of operation. Fourth, a renegotiated lease. That would include operational covenants. As it relates to the due diligence on the cost, I would like to add one more request, and that is that before council would be asked to grant final approval, and in fact, immediately, if you will, ask you to go to your architect, John Fisher, and the contractor that previously, you know, committed to a guaranteed price on the previous project, so he's very familiar with the project. Go to those people, ask them, ask the architect to produce a preliminary set of plans, ask the contractor to give us a preliminary articulated cost estimate, so that city staff and council can have a much better sense of confidence about what it is you propose for the city to do, and a sense of confidence about the cost. Is that something that you would be willing to do? This would be at the expense of the Theater Foundation.
Absolutely. You've detailed everything very succinctly and correctly.
Okay. So we're talking about an approval in concept, and before the city would commit any significant amount of money to this project, those conditions would need to be met, and council would need to make a final approval of going forward. So in summary, there's no risk of material spending until the conditions are satisfied. I think this is a critical project for the benefit of the revitalization of the Balboa Village, as well as a critical entry into the arts and cultural scene and quality of life for Newport Beach, to have its own performing arts venue, and it fills an important void in that respect. But in any event, if the project does go forward, and ultimately, it proves not to be successful, the, the investment that the city will make in this project, or would make in this project, I believe, will be fully recoupable, because the city will end up as an owner of a building in Balboa Village that I believe is highly likely will have value that exceeds the city's cost to do the rehabilitation. So there's no real risk in approval of concept here, even after council would approve the final project to go forward. I believe it's a low financial risk ultimately to the city, in the event that it does somehow not succeed, as we would all hope. So when we're asked to make a decision this evening, I want to make sure that we have a resolution in front of us that succinctly represents what I just described. So I assume we can get that done, and that we should be okay, presuming that, at the study session, we get some consensus up here, that that's a reasonable approach.
I'm agreeable to everything you've said. It's totally accurate. Thank you.
Councilman Gardner?
I'm the former, a former president of the board of the Balboa Performing Arts Theater Foundation, so certainly, I have been supportive. I'm not supportive of this. I wrestled with myself and wrestled with myself, and I feel that we always felt that there were things that the city could do, but a $2 million contribution seems to be quite a bit. Yes, we could have a building that was a theater, but if that, if it had failed and we had to take it back, what we had was a theater, which, if this group can't make it succeed, why would a next group meet? So to me, it's like, we would have so much invested, that we would then have to go into subsidizing a theater. If that's what we want to do, that's one thing, but I think we need to consider that. Secondly, I question the support. I mean, if you call me on the phone and ask my opinion on something, and I don't have to put up anything, sure, I'm supportive of it. I think what struck me, when the last time this came up, was Councilman Petros rehearsing what they had done with the Environmental Nature Center. In a very short period, they had raised a comparable sum of money. That was community support. To me, $4 million, if it's, really is the support there, the foundation should be able to raise $4 million. And I'm just, I'm having trouble of us spending $2 million on a building that, now, I realize this is only in concept, but it's, once we make that, that conceptual, I mean, I, you're going to bring me a business plan, I'm going to look at it and go, oh, the numbers look great. I'm not a theater person, I can't even evaluate it intelligently, probably. So I'm just really wrestling with the $2 million, not, not with the project, not with the ideas of it, but with that investment. And I'm willing to listen tonight and have my opinion changed, but that's where I am right now.
May I respond?
Please do.
We're not asking for $2 million. We're asking for an approval of the concept. At that point, we have a basis to go back to the community and say, the city now supports this project. The community has to step forward and do their part. It's an equal 50/50 proposition. Now, there's been 18 years spent on the attempt to do it in the past. In trying to talk to people about contributing more money, I get the door slammed in my face. These are my ex-friends. They don't want to talk to me anymore. Okay? Why? Because they've heard this over and over and over, and they don't believe, like you don't believe. Therefore, we've turned this around. We said to these people, if We said to these people, if we showed you the city has supported this project, if we then do our share, would you support it? And they said, yes. That's what I bring to you.
I would just say that the city has supported it. We bought the building, so it's not like we don't have an investment.
I understand.
Further counsel input?
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Kiff, I'm wondering if you could help me on some of the historical features of the original lease and as it relates to this lease. The original lease had a term of 50 years. The proposal that's before us, in concept at least, is for a 50-year term. Do you know where the original 50 years came from and why 50 years is appropriate now?
Actually, Councilmember Petros, I can't help you there. I don't know the genesis of that at the time. I'd have to go back and look. I was around but didn't work on this.
As I recall from the foundation conversations, that was the request, because they felt that was the way they could get some funding. If they had to get a loan or something, you needed a long enough lease.
I think that I appreciate Mr. Heck's investment in this, and Steve has quite a background, success at the fairgrounds and at other venues, so I know of your success. The devil's always in the details, and in particular, within the lease and the lease terms. I'm a little concerned that, at least as it relates to the terms that have been put forward by the foundation on number 3-5, it speaks to the financial terms, but there isn't anything in there about the city approval of the business plan. So I would want to make sure that one of the contingencies of accepting moving forward is not only securing the $2 million, but that there is, in fact, consent by the sitting council, that they agree and will support the business plan. I'm interested in any opt-outs or termination agreements or clauses to the lease. I don't want to sit on a rotten egg for 50 years and try and get this thing to move forward. If they cannot make this go, we need to cut the tie quickly and move on with either selling the asset or moving on to the next lease option that we have, but not wait for any length of period like that.
Tony, it's my expectation that the lease would include operational covenants, that, you know, in the event that operations don't go forward as we would expect in accordance with those covenants, that would be a default, which would enable the city.
I think that's prudent, and that should be included.
Further counsel comments? And I would like to open this up to the public. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this this evening?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, counsel. My name's Ralph Rodheim. I'm here representing the Balboa Village Merchants Association, the previous bid. We met this morning, we meet frequently, and I'd like to start by addressing Councilwoman Stagel, there is, and also Councilwoman Gardner. I think there is a tremendous community support, including Waki and Janet Ray, who live on Bay Island, and their friends. They don't only support it, but they put up their money, prepared to put up more money, and we're talking significant dollars. The merchants support this, the residents around the area support it. I was on the previous board, we had lunches and dinners, and every time we did one, we got $50,000 here, $75,000 there. So I think the financial support and what Don said is critical. By you moving forward with this in concept will enable Don, the board, and us to help get this funded and make it a reality. I want to quickly read the letter which I just passed out. "The Balboa Village Merchants Association wholeheartedly supports the passage of this agenda as presented to you. The improvement and completion of the rebuilding of the Balboa Theater is essential to the vision of the Balboa Village. Its renovation will bring much-needed culture to the city and will provide a keystone to the future success of the area, as well for Newport Beach residents, visitors, and us, the merchants. Balboa Village was referred to by Councilwoman Gardner as the soul of the city," which, so actually, that was a wonderful statement, and it really has been and continues to be. "It's a destination point for our Newport Beach residents, all Newport Beach residents, and for the visitors. A successful multi-use entertainment venue will inject an important stream of revenue into the area restaurants by encouraging before-and-after-event dining. The shops will benefit from the browsing and purchases made. The theater could very well help reinstate the glamour and the prestige of when we had the Big Band era or the era of the Rendezvous Ballroom, all part of our history. Therefore, the Board of Directors asks for your approval of this item and hereby pledge all of our support, as much as possible, to help the Balboa Theater create a new sense of place for Balboa Village." So the merchants are a support, and our organization is not just made up of merchants, but also residents, and we think this is really the catalyst to help renovate the whole village, and everybody in the city will enjoy it. Right now, I'm driving to Laguna Beach Playhouse. It'd be really nice to have similar venue right in our own backyard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak on this topic?
My name is Roger Gravel. I lived in Newport Beach most of my life, but unfortunately don't have the privilege of living here now, but I do always have a very strong attachment to aspects of this community. The Port Theater was one, I love seeing that come back. The Balboa Theater is another one. I got involved with this through Ralph and then through Steve, who I've worked with before, and I, in talking with folks in the community, I get the same concerns that this council, that some council members have expressed, that they're concerned that this has been going on too long and nothing has happened. Well, I think you have an opportunity now to either put it to rest or to accomplish something. I think all of your concerns can be addressed through this conceptual review you're going through, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But I think it's worth it to the community to at least make that effort, and at this point, it's not going to cost you anything. So I would encourage your support of this.
Thank you very much.
I just have to mention that Roger Gravel and I go back a long way. We rode horses together when we were about 12, and we used to actually Indian wrestle. Can you imagine the two of us? He was much smaller in those days.
Is it politically correct to Indian wrestle these days? I don't know. I've lost control again. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this? Please come forward.
I'm not here about the theater. I came for something else, but just listening to what you're saying, one man says, you're not committing $2 million. It sounds like to me you're committing. It sounds like that you have to say, if you guys throw in, we'll throw in. No, you go first. No, you go first. And we've been through this for a long time. I am a theater goer, I have season tickets to several venues, including the one up on Cliff Drive, which I believe the council supports, and I think we just, I wouldn't battle the traffic to go down to the peninsula to see a show. If, in fact, the people who live on the peninsula can solely support this, that sounds like a good idea. But just saying, will you go? I don't know. I don't think I would take the drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this topic?
Thank you, Mayor Hill, and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. I can't remember if it was two or three years ago that, at the old city hall, we heard the group with the same name claiming that they had raised a large amount of money, had it in the bank, for a similar but more grand proposal, as Councilman Hen said. Obviously, that money didn't result in a theater going forward, and one might wonder where that money went. As to this new money here being asked to commit, I share the previous speaker's concern. I tried to follow Councilman Hen's explanation of how an approval in concept differs from an approval. What I have seen here is rather vague about that, and I'm not quite sure how the council, once it has given its approval in concept, backs out of that. This seems like a big decision, $2 million towards a lease that you have not seen and conditions that you are maybe going to see this evening. It seems like the kind of decision you would be wanting to sleep on, rather than considering in a few hours from now, tonight, making your final approval in concept. Mr. Beasley, as you said, spoke very fast. He apparently has given you some packets or information or something here that's going to help you make your decision. The public has not seen that. Matter of fact, the public is in the lobby. There is not even the staff report that I picked up on Friday, although I think for the evening session, it might be in there somewhere, that has this little proposal. He said he went through this very fast. I have no idea what's in here about the Fairfield Theater and how wonderful this is all going to work, and I hope that the city will make some effort, that the public can see this and know what you're being asked to base your decision on before you make that decision tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public like to come forth? All right?
I'd like to clarify something.
There's someone behind you that would like to speak, so.
I'm Doug Pasquale. I wasn't planning on speaking this afternoon, but I think Councilman Hen articulated it very well, and I don't really see any risk whatsoever in proceeding as has been described. My wife and I have contributed and have a commitment to contribute about $50,000 to the theater and will honor that commitment. We have a much larger commitment to Experocean, and I serve on that board. I think that the theater is an important part of the revitalization of Balboa Village. I believe Experocean, because of its size and scale, is even more important. The conclusion I've come to, having had a career in and around real estate, is the city really needs to step up and make a decision on this stuff and face facts sooner rather than later and not delude yourself. You can study this as much as you want, but at the end of the day, the Balboa Village is never going to be much more than what it is unless the city takes a leadership role. And so either actively get on that bandwagon and take advantage of some of the best real estate in the country and make this an asset to the community, or do something else. Condemn properties, convert it to residential, do something else, but act on it. You've owned the building for how long, 18 years? You clearly don't have a very good, a better idea. Lido Village is the same thing, premier real estate in the country. You have crap buildings there that are not producing much in the way of revenue for the city. Figure out a way to condemn some of these buildings or do something about it, be proactive, show the kind of macho that you've done and other things, and I commend you for addressing tough issues like getting this building built, the dock tax issue, you've done a lot of things. But don't pretend that the village is ever going to be something other than it is, or that we're going to be able to do this as just community. Somebody has to step up and take leadership and says, we're not going to let this be anything but the success it can be. You're going to have to take little steps and big steps, but I think it's time. Quit studying everything to death. I know you have to do studies, and I don't understand the public sector as well as I do the private sector, but if you want the village to be successful, make that decision and figure out a way to get it done, and I think that the theater is a small, important piece to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Hill?
Councilman Petros?
The last speaker gave the impression that the city has in some way been ambivalent about our action on this, and I would just like to remind the public that, in fact, the city has, on numerous occasions, been the one to step out and commit. We're the ones who have, in fact, been driving this bus and waiting. Please don't think it's the city that has been sitting by and trying to thumb wrestle ourselves over this matter. In fact, we would very much like this to happen, and I thought we would like to have had it happen already by now. This is not on us.
Thank you. No, you've, under our rules of order, you've had your turn. Sorry. Anybody else from the council like to speak? Please, Councilman Hen?
What's your name again?
Curry. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, if this were easy, it had been done a long time ago. We have been working on the peninsula to revitalize Balboa Village now for years, for the entire time that I've sat on the city council. And what we've done is, we've worked with people on this theater, we've set targets, but as we now know in retrospect, those were not realistic nor reachable targets. We've asked people to do things that didn't work in an economy, and we've continued to wait and watch as the economic viability of Balboa Village has continued to decline. If we had a redevelopment authority, this might be an easier question. If we had other types of authority, it might be an easier question. If we were engaged in massive urban renewal here, it would be a different question, but we're not. We're in partnership with our neighbors and with people in the private sector to revitalize this neighborhood, because revitalization of this neighborhood is in the long-term interest of this city and this community, to keep our property values high, to keep it fresh, to keep this a desirable place to live, and to provide the amenities that people who want to live here want to have. And so that's why I think it's time for us to recognize that whatever we think we've been doing for the past 16 or so years hasn't worked, and what we need to do is to do something else, recognize that the city needs to be a lead partner here in making these investments so that we can have a catalyst, a catalyst that will revitalize the village, that will bring in new restaurants, bring in new shops, do the kinds of things that we hear week after week from the people who live on the peninsula, that they want us to do, the investments that they want us to make, so that the peninsula, again, retains its luster as one of the most premier places to live in California. So I will be supporting, but first of all, let me say this. This proposal came forward from a very dedicated group of citizens. I just want to thank Dr. Heck and Steve Beasley and the Pasquales. I've been at their home, working to raise funds privately, to support these venues and all the people who've served on the board over the years. This really has been an organic grassroots effort, driven by people in the community, to address what's a serious need in the community and to provide the catalyst that will move the peninsula forward. And I also want to particularly commend Councilman Hen, who has been tireless in his dedication to find the correct financial strategy that is the spark for revitalizing the Balboa Village. We need to recognize that this effort is more than just about providing a venue for good entertainment, although that's what it is, and that's what we're doing, and we've been able to get off on the cheap. We didn't have to build the Seagerstrom Center, we didn't have to build the Irvine Bowl, we didn't have to build Anaheim Stadium. We're able to take advantage of all of those facilities that other people paid for, and in our community, we're able to provide some very unique venues that people will use for generations to come. And Councilmember Hen, I just want to thank you for your efforts, which have been tireless in your entire term on this council, to find the key and find the catalyst to make the peninsula work. So I'm going to be supporting this. I think it's a good concept. I think it's going to be fleshed out in a way that's going to answer the questions that people have, and I think it's going to provide a resource to our community that generations of Newport Beach residents will be thankful for, that generations yet on board who will move to the peninsula and enjoy this, and will come to the peninsula because it's a desirable place to live, other than the alternative what it would be if we allow it to decline, will thank you for as well.
Thank you. Councilman Selig?
Thank you. I've always been a big supporter of the theater. My wife has done volunteer work for them, we've had fundraisers in our home over the years, and, but I always envisioned it as something that people felt passionately about, and they were going to raise the money from the private sector to do this, that the city did its job when it stepped up and bought the facility. And so now we have this proposal that's called an investment, and really what it is, it's not investment, it's a gift. It's $2 million, it's $40,000 over 50 years, probably less than 50 years with ticket inflation, but still, if you take a look at investing $2 million, that's certainly not, not an investment from a financial standpoint. You can talk about it, investment, in other ways, I suppose. standpoint. You can talk about it, investment, in other ways, I suppose. And the $2 million, we really don't have a plan that it's based on. We have contractor and architect's estimate. We still haven't seen a line item that even, I think even at this stage, someone should be able to produce a line item that gives you an idea of what the different cost components going into, into this building are. One of the things that I wonder is, who's going to cover the cost if there's overruns on it? Is the city going to be on the hook for that? Typically happens in projects like this, and I think the staff is suggesting that there's project management on the city's part involved also. I wonder what the building's going to be worth after the improvements are done. And, you know, the proposal is, if it fails as a theater, then the city's going to have a usable building. That's part of the investment, I suppose, but I'm wondering what it can really be used for when it's, if it fails. And then if you have all this equipment inside, who's going to be responsible for getting rid of it and details of, of that nature? You look at some basic questions on it, and I guess one of them that I have is, this is a substantial investment of funds, expenditure of funds, and is this a higher priority than other things we have to do? We could do a lot of landscaping in the peninsula for $2 million that would be seen and enjoyed by a lot of folks. And then again, is it, is this really something that it's correct to do to take public funds and invest it in this building? The biggest thing that bothers me is, this idea is coming before us tonight with no business plan. Two times before, since I've been on the council, the foundation has come before this council, one to ask for $175,000 to get their building permits. I asked, "Where's the business plan?" It's coming. We're going to have a business plan. Can't remember how many years ago that was. Second time on the $3 million loan concept, where's the business plan? Well, we're going to have one. We're going to, you know, one's coming up. I had a discussion with Mr. Beasley and Don Heck last week, and asked them where the business plan was, and they said that, "Well, we're going to have it at the beginning of the month." And I guess that drives my common sense, so to speak, is, "Well, what's the hurry in doing a commitment tonight when, if we're going to have a business plan in a couple of weeks?" You wouldn't go to the bank and ask them to give you a loan if you didn't have some kind of a business plan to show them. So even preliminary discussions, you'd want to show something to, to your banker. So again, I wonder what's, you know, what's the hurry to get this done tonight? I said before, both times when we talked about the business plan, that when the foundation produces a plan, that we need to have a qualified peer review of it. I've seen enough studies done, and might have done a few myself, that you slam them the way that you want them. I'm not a theater expert. I don't think anybody on the council is, so it seems to me that we would be remiss to not have an outside peer review of this business plan so that we know exactly what we're getting into. That really brings up another question, is, do we really want to get into the theater business? Because that's, that's what we're doing to one degree or another. By doing this, we are getting into the theater business. Right now, we just agreed to buy a building and lease it to the foundation. This takes us another step further into the theater business, and you see various cities doing it in any number of ways, to the point where they own and operate the facility themselves. Then I wondered, do we really, should we reevaluate the purpose of, purpose of this? We just seem to accept the, that it's axiomatic that we need to move forward on this when this is a decision was initially made 15 years ago. And I get to thinking, well, maybe if we really want a performing arts venue that serves the entire city, it should be located somewhere else where it has a better location. You don't build Walmarts at the end of a cul-de-sac for a reason, and so I just wonder, you know, what kind of a chance of success that this theater's going to have if it opens up. One of the original goals was to, as I understand it, was to save and restore the Balboa Theater. Well, you look at it now, it's, the theater's gone. There's, it's, the whole inside's been gutted. It's a dirt floor. It's four walls and a roof and remnants of a facade. And there were historic preservation guidelines that were in the original lease. I'm not sure what happened over the years, but it certainly doesn't look like those were followed from doing a review of what you're supposed to do in those guidelines. And then another question that comes to my mind is, this was originally presented to the community as a performing arts venue. And in my meeting with, with Don and Steve last week, they told me that seven out of the 10 performances are going to be musical performances. They're not going to be stage plays or the performing arts type of performances other than a concert hall. And in fact, if you take a look at the Fairfield Theater, that's exactly what it is. It's a concert hall. Seven out of 10, as they told me, were going to be musical performances. And so again, I just wondered, you know, does the neighborhood really want a concert hall? I think that when everyone was in support of this thing, they probably had a broader view of what this venue was going to be, but the concepts changed because in their due diligence so far, they realized that original concept doesn't work. Now we keep hearing that the Balboa Theater is going to be the magic bullet that's going to save Balboa Village. I don't think that's true. I think it's, it would be a nice to have in Balboa Village, and certainly the original theater was, was something to save. But the problems in Balboa Village really have to do with land juice and zoning and not whether we have an Expro Ocean or a, or a Balboa Theater there. One of the things that we need to get into this program, and I haven't seen it so far, is that there needs to be a significant maintenance reserve budgeted, and in the numbers that were presented to us by the, in the proposal we have before us today, I don't see anything in there for a maintenance reserve. Then I wonder, how would we guarantee that the city is not going to be annually subsidizing this venue? We commit to the $2 million. They raised the $800,000. It starts operating. They can't, they can't crack the nut, and then they start coming to the city council and saying, "Well, you know, we need, we need some help here." And by that time, the city council's invested for $2.5 million, and this council basically puts future councils kind of in a corner as to make a decision on what, what to do with that. You know, I looked at the Fairfield Theater. The Fairfield Theater, as successful as it is, it's had trouble making its payments to the city. They only pay about $40,000 a year for their facility. They're late on their payments consistently. Some of the, they're called selectmen back there, not councilmen, is questioned whether it's really worth the city being involved in the, in the Fairfield Theater. The Fairfield Theater's located right next to the main railroad line going to New York City. It gets a lot of exposure in publicity, and yet it still has trouble making its payments. And one of the things that the-
Finally?
Let me finish. And one of the things that the Fairfield Theater did is, they started out as offering performances in, in other venues. They got themselves established as an, as an operating organization, proved that they could put on the performances before they actually went out and got a building from the city. And so I just wonder, you know, does the community at large in Newport Beach, outside of the group of supporters on the peninsula, really want this? I've only received two emails on this subject, one in support and one in opposition to it. So I have a lot of questions, a lot of concerns on this. I, I really want to support it in my heart, but my logical mind just continues to raise questions. And, you know, no matter what, we really need to have a business plan with a solid outside peer review. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I thought I might make some comments, but if you would like to-
I'd be pleased to defer to you.
I guess I appreciate everything that Councilman Selig has said, although I'm, I'm not so certain that in a global sense, all of those things will in fact need to be answered before the city would put up the money based upon the proposal that's before us, at least as I interpret it. I don't think there's anything vague about it. I think it's, it's the request of, will you commit X amount of dollars based upon the following items? And those items are $2 million in the bank, cash available to spend, due diligence that encovers all of those types of questions that you have raised, a business plan that encapsulates all of that, and an operational lease, and that's just not a business plan and not just an operational lease, but that's a business plan that we approve, and an operational lease that we approve, and the preliminary conceptual design and cost estimate that we recognize that fits within the $2 million allocation. If and only if those items are present, based upon what I understand this to be, then we would provide $2 million. I would suspect that even in that lease, we would have language, that if there were overruns or that type of thing, that they would have to take care of those beyond that. So that's the positive aspect. So now let's take the negative aspect, and let's say that they raise the $2 million, we approve all of these plans, we move forward, it opens up, and no one comes to the party. And so they, and by the way, when they're $2 million, they have X number of months of operation. I think they have a couple of years of operational cost in there. And of course, that would have to be evaluated in the business plan as well. But let's say that that runs its gamut, and so three years out, there's just not an opportunity there for this to be financially feasible. We've got, by my estimate, not meant to be accurate to the penny, but we've probably got close to $1 million in the building right now. I'm guesstimating, and put two more into it, so we have about $3 million into it. I would hazard a guess the dirt value is worth more than $3 million. May I get your pardon? Well, there's no parking in most of the city, and, and we have property sell all the time. So I guess my point being is that I'm not sure if we had to raise the property and offer it for sale, that we really are at risk that much, if at any. So I'm going to be supporting it, but the support is based upon all those contingencies being found accurate, including all of the issues that you raised as well, in that due diligence and in the business plan. So any further comments from the council?
I, I think your understanding is precisely correct, Mr. Mayor, and all of that tall order of wonderment for Councilmember Selig, I think virtually all of that is intended to be illuminated before the city makes its final decision to go forward here. And so that's what we're talking about. It's an approach. It's an approval in concept. There are lots of things that are needed to be stroked out here before the city can and should be asked to grant final approval. And so at the end of the day, I don't view this as an investment of any sort of a economic sense. I view this as an investment in the revitalization of Balboa Village and an investment in the cultural and arts offering in this city, and I see a real need for both. And I believe we can make a prudent decision and satisfy those objectives. And I know Doug Pascuali fairly well, Tony, and I know it was not his intent to impugn the city's prior positioning on all of this. I think he was just saying this is an opportunity here to demonstrate the city's leadership and perhaps once again, but nevertheless, to demonstrate the city's leadership. And so I, that's the way I took it, and I think actually it's appropriate.
All right. With that, let's talk trash.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, we might, might jump to the next item, given that we're a little bit short in time, and we actually have a trash item on tonight, if you wanted to hear the same presentation. So with your permission, move to the Westside Facilities discussion so that we could make sure we accommodate-
Very much.
-a closed session as well. So we're going to have Steve Badham and Laura Netwiler talk about this one together. I'll introduce it briefly to the folks in the community. I see a number of folks from West Newport Beach. Thank you for coming. I'd like to thank the council members who've worked on this proposal with us. That's Mr. Petros, Mr. Hill, and Mr. Hen, and we very much appreciate, again, the chance to bring this in front of you for the first time. As I said in an email, this is very early in the process, so no need to panic, but hopefully a chance to move this along with some council direction today. So with that, I'll turn that over to Steve.
Thanks, Dave. Mayor and members of council, we're pleased to bring a brief report to you today, and hopefully you can give us some direction, where, where we should go next on this great process. As you're aware, we are looking at several ideas regarding the consolidation of our two municipal yards, potential site for a police station and a community center. So I'll start with just looking at the corporation yards, and just to familiarize everyone with, with our, our properties. We have an eight-acre parcel on Superior Avenue, currently housing our refuse transfer station and all of our maintenance facilities. And as you know, we've been outsourcing, street sweeping, trash, and various other things, and we're getting to the point now where we see a future where we're able to consolidate and reduce the amount of space needed. The other yard that we have is our utilities yard on 16th Street, and that yard has a little more hard infrastructure in it. There's actually a reservoir, underground reservoir in the middle of that yard, and along with that, too, there also is our 800 megahertz antenna that's also on that site. This parcel is a six-and-a-half acre site.
Steve, where's that antenna located?
You can see on the-
The red dot.
The red dot, right about there. And it actually is just a kind of a sidebar. We think there may be some opportunities to be able to kind of relocate this to a better position on the parcel. If we end up reusing this parcel for another use, there, there might be an opportunity there, but I'll show you kind of some ideas down the road here. And then the other parcel we, we're certainly looked at is the police station. What do we do with the police station? And as you know, it's about a 48,000 square foot facility we currently have, and we're, it's kind of a difficult parcel to deal with because, as you know, it's a central facility, so it really requires replacement. The existing building is a tilt-up structure. It's very difficult to modify or retrofit. So the real, the real solution for the police station is actually to find another site. And we've had this, some of this discussion before, but as you know, you know, we've looked at various areas. There are other sites for consideration. Certainly, if we are able to consolidate the yards, there's an available site in one of those parcels. There's also the opportunity, if we need to, look at possibility of relocating the police department in the airport area by the way of purchasing land or leasing land. And the other area that we really, I think, we think is the best site is the consolidated yard site on Superior. And here's kind of a little bit of a block sketch on how we would do that. You can see the, the refuse transfer station still being in place, a combined yard built around that transfer station. And then along the frontage on Superior Avenue, we would envision a police station, probably a larger size than we have now, along with a parking structure that would accommodate all of the police parking, yard parking, and public and so forth. So we think that the combination-
Steve, just as a matter of curiosity, what's the green along, there's a long sort of thin green line?
Oh, yeah. Well, that would just be continuation of the yard.
Okay.
Yeah, I kind of showed a corridor down the middle there because we have, we have rather large storm drain and a sanitation district pipeline that goes through the site, so it's really not, it's kind of a reserve for that area.
And in your, in your square footage allocations for the police station, does that include the rifle range and the maintenance yard and all that kind of a thing?
Well, I think those are the kinds of things that we need to get input from the council and the community on as we move forward. Right now, we're at a block diagram stage. We did do some needs, some basic needs assessment. I think the building that we envisioned was probably closer around 60,000 square feet or maybe a little larger. It does depend on what you want there. It depends on whether you're going to have a jail or a shooting range or any kind of other amenities, how much storage you want onsite versus, and if we can co-locate with other agencies and maybe have joint uses, that would affect the size of the building as well.
So is the green area, that's all the existing municipal yard operations, but we're just compressing them into a smaller area by being- compressing them into a smaller area by being more efficient or something? Is that what's going on?
Yes, I, I think that's kind of what we're saying here. We're currently, the whole site is being used as a yard. There are, you know, due to consolidations and some contracting out, we do have some vacant areas, some areas that are not properly utilized, um, with some probably replacement buildings that are more efficient. We, we can, we did a needs assessment, and we feel that we could adequately fit all of our operations, including our utility yard operations, into this one yard. So, um, that's the kind of the direction we're, we're kind of going with, with the yards. And the next area we wanted to really look into is the, um, the community center. And, um, I've asked Laura to join me here to kind of give you an overview of what our vision is for the program.
Thank you, Steve. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Laura Detwiler, Recreation and Senior Services Director. Our concept for programming the new facility really be based on the success that we're currently having at, at the, the West Newport facility, uh, and also based on the feedback we've gotten from the community about what they'd like to see in this facility, uh, and based on some of the successes that we've had in, in other community centers throughout the city. So, uh, those first three bullets are, are really what we see as the highest priority, and certainly what we want to do with this facility is focus on programming for all ages. Uh, as you know, the fitness center at the Oasis is very successful. We're three and a half years into that building, and we're averaging over 1,800 members a year. Uh, we think we can duplicate those same numbers on the west side of town. Uh, and, and again, to remind you, that's for 50 and better. Uh, we're also looking at maybe a little bit of a twist at having, having some teen designated hours, maybe through the three o'clock to six o'clock hour, uh, which would give opportunity for our youth to come in and get a good workout in as well. And then also our gymnasium, uh, highly successful program at West Newport right now. We program that facility seven days a week. Youth and adults use it, uh, basketball, volleyball, badminton, indoor soccer, and Pee-wee sports. We also have, uh, national junior basketball that use it on Saturdays and Sundays, as well as some of the local schools. And then also a gymnastics room for youth. We've got a really successful program going on right now at West Newport, and that really kind of dedicates the space where you have mats and bars and those types of things that need to remain fixed. Uh, and then also a wellness room that would, uh, offer yoga, zumba, tai chi, Pilates, cardio, cardio bar, balance and mobility, strength and dance, just to name a few. Uh, and then something that we call a flexible classroom space that really gives us an opportunity to offer anything in those, in those rooms where you set up and break down for a variety of programs that would average, uh, range from the arts to language, health, education, et cetera. And then potentially looking at an indoor rock climbing wall, which is something that's popular among all ages. What you're seeing there can be accommodated in a 25,000 square foot community center. Uh, and then space permitted, some of the other things that we've looked at on the outside of the facility would be potentially a four to six lane lap pool, um, which would provide lap swimming, obviously, uh, opportunity for water aerobics, and then also our very popular learn to swim program as well. Uh, and then pickleball, pickleball, you're hearing a lot about that. We think you're going to continue to hear about that. Certainly a popular sport, and, and we've heard a lot of interest here in Newport Beach. So we're looking at a place to actually dedicate some courts, and I think this would be a really nice opportunity there. An outdoor walking track with outdoor, outdoor fitness stations. We're doing something similar down at Marina Park, uh, very popular in other communities as well. Uh, potentially a community garden area. Uh, we have a very long waiting list at Oasis, so we know there's interest there, uh, and certainly a playground. Uh, what we'd like to do is really focus on health and wellness at this facility. It would be somewhat different than Marina Park. Sure, there would be some programs that would be similar with the flexible classroom space, but we're focusing on sailing, kayaking, canoeing down at Marina Park. It'd be a premier facility rental, uh, and then also, uh, a variety of classes, but really focusing on health and wellness in this particular facility for all ages. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Steve, and he's going to talk to you about some site concepts.
Just one quick question. When you say multi-generational, I, I suppose that means there'll be programs here for senior citizens, like maybe auxiliary stuff from what we're doing at Oasis?
All ages. And, and we really do that at all of our facilities, including Oasis. We do have programs in the evening time for, for younger folks as well. Uh, we really try to, to look at the surrounding community and find different programs to offer, um, that are close by their homes. So, um, we'd like to do that here as well.
I, I guess from my perspective, I would hope there could be a particular emphasis, though, on seniors programming in this facility for the west side, you know, to, to sort of pick up some of the flavor of what's going on at Oasis in this facility, so.
And I think it's certainly doable. Heavy participation normally is in the morning hours before school gets out, and so, uh, programming for seniors in the morning hours and then after school, focus on kids and adults later in the evening. So I think it, it can be achieved, definitely.
Uh, one question I have, and whenever we get into this discussion about facilities, is to understand, um, identify our financial position. Um, you know, we have these reserves of $130 million, as Councilmember Gardner pointed out, you know, what, what is really the optimal level of reserves, you know? Why don't we have that financial analysis from our finance department as a starting point to know, this is the money we can spend, or, you know, where is our forward financial analysis in terms of projections of revenues in 10 years, you know, that we can replenish our revenue? So what are we really talking about in terms of, of funding? And when I look at these facilities, you know, public safety is, is a core service to local government, and we have a lot of recreation in this city. There's just no shortage of recreational opportunities. Where is the police station in terms of, I guess, back up to what is really the funding that we have available? I've heard numbers of 60 million for the police station. Where is it in the queue? And maybe that's more a question for the city manager.
Actually, I can take an answer, a crack at that on behalf of the Finance Committee, uh, where, um, we have, we on a regular basis look at the facilities financing plan and, uh, which is a tool that we use to help see how we can fit priorities into the financial capability of the city. And the most recent iteration of that, uh, showed the police headquarters being able to be moved forward in 2020, which is actually very far from now, and when you think about the planning and lead times that are necessary for that kind of a facility. And there is, it also currently accommodates a number, and I don't recollect exactly what it is, for a west side community facility. And, I thought it was more than 15, but maybe not. In, in any event, the, the funding, that, the latest generation that we saw of that plan showed that it was likely, probable at least, that this spending could all be accommodated on a cash basis without further borrowing, uh, to execute all of this. One thing that we will need to do, once we, once we land on a conceptual approach here, we're going to have to go back and have another look at that and reanalyze that.
Yeah. My question, what I'm trying to get, um, understand or identify is though, what is the assumption those plans are based on in terms of reserve levels? I mean, is it based on maintaining a very high level of reserves, or what is, you know, what is the reserves? I mean, do we really need to maintain? Maybe the city manager can address that.
Well, the facilities financing plan is a financial tool that includes a component from reserves. Uh, in fact, we set up, part of our reserves are included as a facilities reserve for things like this. It also takes in developer contributions and then a general fund contribution. So it's those three cups, those three sources that pull up the cup.
Okay. So if you look at, at your, um, the kind, the level of reserves, you know, there's 130 million, what is the level of reserves that you're looking at, three, three years out, six years out, 10 years out? What is, what is the planned level of reserve? And why, why do you need that level of reserve?
Um, your council has asked us to take a new look at that. We haven't proposed anything different. We do want to go through the Finance Committee for that.
Okay. So you, that's great. You'll be coming back with us with some assumptions on that.
It is, actually. Councilmember Gardner has raised this issue about the appropriateness of our reserve levels, and we will, that's part of the Finance Committee work plan for this year, is to address that issue for recommendation to the council to consider.
Okay. And are we going to be using independent experts? For example, someone from the university or PIMCO, or is it more council?
Mr. Curry, please. There, there is no answer to the question of what is the magic number of reserves. $130 million today, if the sun comes up like it does tomorrow, is probably too much. If we get hit by an earthquake or tsunami, I'll guarantee you, it's not enough. So the issue is, do we manage prudent reserves, using them effectively for one-time capital projects, not using them, uh, for operating costs, which is what we've avoided during through the recession? And then making sure that we're addressing, uh, our long-term capital requirements as they come up, and we're able to do it now on a pay-as-you-go basis, so that our, our projects and our infrastructure is refreshed. But there is no expert that has the magic number of that this is the correct number of reserves, and more or less is wrong.
I, I understand that, but I think if you ask three experts, you could probably form a range of, of some amount versus, no expert has said it's 130 million.
So actually, there are three experts that have opined about the city's financial position. They're called rating agencies, all three of which have rated us AAA on our underlying obligation, uh, credit rating. However, the facilities financing, back to your point, the facilities financing plan does lay out the reserve, the ebb and flow of reserves as it relates to the spending associated with that plan. So that will be clearly, you know, laid out, uh, when we come back for an analysis of this. And, and we do have a pretty good idea of how the rating agencies view financial capacity and, uh, a couple of the key basic measures that they look at. So while I agree with Councilmember Curry that there's no one magic answer here, we'll be able to form a view of what's an appropriate range on that issue. I'm very confident. While this is a tremendously interesting discussion, I'm not sure it's the topic at hand. The topic at hand is to give staff some guidance as to if we were to plan for a West Newport Beach community facility, which I think the council has said we would like to do, where that might be.
And we're just about to get to the fun stuff. Okay. You're ready.
All right. So we'll jump right in. Thank you. Um, so we did, we did look, we scoured the whole West Newport looking for possible sites, and as Laura said, we needed about 25,000 square feet, uh, probably about 120 parking spaces to accommodate the program. So, um, we probably equates about a minimum two acre parcel. So, and knowing there's not a lot of parcels out there, we did come up with two possibilities that we wanted to put out in front of you tonight. Um, first one being what we call our, our Superior Coast Highway site. And as you may be aware, that's the site that's adjacent, uh, to the highway where there's an existing parking lot there. And just to give you a little history, uh, it's a remnant parcel of the realignment of the Superior Avenue that's happened in the, in the late 80s. Uh, and then the parking lot is there because of the requirement, when we widened Coast Highway in the early 90s, we had to mitigate 64 parking spaces. So that's part of that site. Um, you can see on the top there, I see a little, we did a little profile. This site is actually rather difficult. There's about 60 feet of elevation change from Coast Highway all the way up to Sunset View Park. So as you can imagine, it would require a lot of excavation, a lot of retaining walls in order to build into this site. But the nice, the beauty of this site, though, is that by building it into the, into the slope, it does protect views.
Why 300 parking spaces?
The 300 parking spaces, we, we determined that from about 120, uh, spaces that we would need for the center, the 64 that we would need for mitigating that, we had to replace that parking, because that was required by mitigation for the widening of Coast Highway. And then we put some extra parking in there, because one of the benefits of this would be to provide parking for the Sunset Ridge Park. And one of the nice features of this is that the idea of having a pedestrian overcrossing.
I'd, I'd like to introduce one other thought, too, and that is that it, it would be nice to identify a sort of a, a park and tram solution for, um, the Balboa, for the Balboa Peninsula, for people to be able to park and access the peninsula, so it wouldn't bother me to kind of view parking needs for this facility through that prism as well.
Uh, Steve, question for you. You would know, is there some kind of a Caltrans view easement in this area?
This, this is not subject to the, to the Caltrans, uh, view requirements on Sunset Nice features of this, of this, um, potential site is that, as I said, the improved access to Sunset Ridge. Part of the project envisions a pedestrian overcrossing at the corner of Coast Highway and Superior, um, that would, uh, probably be able to ramp up from the sidewalk. As you come down this grade, you could literally walk level and be at a bridge level to get across. Um, that's something we might want to consider, even if we don't select this as a site down the road. We also envisioned of maybe a future crossing across, um, Coast Highway, and then these crossings might be eligible for Mezzarem funding or other grant fundings down the road, because part of the other benefit of having these overcrossings is the improved traffic movement on the intersection. If you don't have a pedestrian cycle to deal with, you can get a lot more cars through an intersection.
So would you remove all the crosswalks then, if you had those two?
I think we would, we would definitely try to do that. I mean, that would be the benefit, is to remove those crosswalks. But we'd have to make, ensure that every, you know, every direction is covered to get, to get through that area. I think we could do that. Another feature that, that we envisioned here was if we pushed the parking structure into the, um, the hillside, we could have essentially like a green roof, which could house a potential, uh, you know, park use like pickleball, or maybe a dog park, or maybe some other park use that this council wants us to look at. Um, so there's a lot of, lot of creativity in this site. It's a kind of a tough site to deal with. Um, kind of the bad part of it is, because of this site is so steep, uh, and there is going to be a lot of excavation. It could be rather costly to build a parking structure. Um, there also is incredible amount of noise on the site. We were out visiting the site, and we noticed there's a lot of highway noise. So any kind of quiet activities would probably not work well in this community center if we were to build it here.
I just, one thing, though, that I was remarking too, is that being so close to the, to Sunset Ridge Park, not only is it nice to have that pedestrian and, and we won't, one of our considerations and concerns is the fact that people have to cross that, that crosswalk. But the other aspect of it is, and thinking in terms of wellness and everything, that you do have the park there, and you've got the walking and the jogging, and you can extend your workout into an outdoor thing, and maybe have some of the classes take advantage of that as well. So it seems like there might be some really great synergy there with all these various uses with, with the extra parking and, and that particular location.
And that, that's a very good point. That proximity is really great. It's also very close to the West Newport community and the peninsula. Um, it, it could potentially be used for other things, parking for, for get, get to the beach or whatever. Um, it could be revenue maybe there, who knows? Uh, so there's a lot of ideas that could come here. As you see, it's a block diagram, and as Dave mentioned, um, you know, I'm the author of, I'm the drawer of this, so don't, you know, don't shoot me. But it's really, um, just to see whether we could actually fit it in this space. So, um, it's not any design we'd be married to, and we could certainly look at others. We also envisioned a connection to the Hoag property, and when the reason for that would be the traffic circulation through this parcel is not very good. Uh, it would be a right turn right out, coming up Superior Avenue. We thought maybe a connection through the Hoag parcel down to Balboa Cove that the signal would be appropriate in order to make it be a little more effective. And we could take advantage of the various levels of the parking structure to make that work. One of the bad, real bad parts about this is it is in the coastal zone, so it would require a coastal permit, so we would have to go through that process, and we all know how that can be. It's also right adjacent to a state highway, and if the overcrossings would probably be subject to some kind of Caltrans review. So we would have essentially two state agencies to deal with in order to probably promote most of the portions of this particular concept.
Steve, let me comment on that briefly. I have been in the supervisor's office, I have been to the 12th floor at OCTA, uh, and am currently also, as a consultant, writing the county's long-range transportation plan. I found it an insult when OCTA decided to unilaterally remove the 19th Street Bridge. Regardless of what you think about the 19th Street Bridge, to take it off and not clean up your own mess was irresponsible. I thought it was irresponsible, and the Coastal Commission removed the parking adjacent to Sunset Ridge and put in jeopardy kids, their parents and their grandparents that have to cross eight lanes of Superior to go from an elevated parking lot down the hill, across the street, and back up an elevated parking lot. In this plan, we've got the ability to safely cross Superior for all users of Sunset Ridge Park, for folks that want to go back and forth between them. We're, we just got a coastal development permit for Sunset View Park. This plan integrates an entire, uh, stretch of active space. The part across, uh, West Coast Highway, I've been speaking with the folks at Caltrans about that. And again, we, if things go the way they are going, these will be included in the long-range transportation plan. Not necessarily fully funded, but at least an acknowledgement from OCTA and Caltrans that they are something that is in our future for the safety of the folks of Newport Beach. Just by virtue of putting that crossing over West Coast Highway can improve that traffic flow by... putting that crossing over West Coast Highway can improve that traffic flow by 10 to 12% based on folks not having to hit that button and go across. And it improves accessibility to the peninsula from a much larger parking area, something that I would hope we could exploit to the Coastal Commission as an asset, something in this plan. This is a real exciting opportunity, given what we're doing on the peninsula with the re-greening of Balboa and all the monumentation and the landscaping here, as well as the upcoming plans for the landscaping along West Coast Highway. So this is a really neat plan. The synergies with Hoag, you know, we have been talking with them. I've had, held four meetings with different representatives of Hoag. They're very excited to integrate wellness and health and the aging population in Newport Beach. And they could, they're very interested in coming alongside of us to partner with us on these. So the proximity makes all the sense in the world.
Well, since we're running out of time, I'll jump to the next site. And that would be the 16th Street Utility Yard. Now, as I said before, if we consolidate our yards to the Superior Avenue site, it frees up this parcel. And we kind of envisioned about half of this parcel, which is about three and a half acres, that could possibly have a layout of the program. And you can see it drawn up there. Again, another one of my creations, not necessarily something we have to stick with. But it seems to fit the program very well. The good news about this area is that it's relatively unencumbered now. There is a reservoir underneath that parking area that's drawn there, but we can keep parking over the reservoir, so that's not an incompatible use. However, the reservoir pump station building, parts of that will probably have to stay so we can maintain that system. And of course, the rest of the parcel there, the remaining three acres could be some future use. It could be the police station, or it could be something else. Could be some other development. It could be some income property kind of a thing. So I think the good, the kind of the, maybe the difficult parts of this parcel could be the fact that it is in the coastal zone. This edge of the, actually, one, the westerly side of our yard is in the coastal zone and the easterly side isn't. But the nice part about this side of the yard is that if you've been out there, if you've been the coastline, you'll notice that there's some incredible views from that parcel. And if Banning Ranch project does move forward, it's anticipated that the park area will be immediately adjacent to this site. So there could be some synergy there on a future park site to be able to control programs in that future park.
Is this site more centrally located within West Newport?
Well, no, it's actually probably a little farther away. In fact, I got another slide right here to show you kind of the proximity. It is a little farther away. But what I'd say, though, is I remember, remember back to when we first built Newport Coast Community Center, and everyone thought, oh, it's on the edge of town, you know, it's too far out there. And what I'll tell you right now, and Laura probably can chime in, too, it's probably one of the most popular community centers that we have in our portfolio. Folks from West Newport drive all the way out to Newport Coast, and I'm one of them. I've done that before. So I think there's any concern about being on the edge of town, I think that'll quickly pass if Banning Ranch does develop and change into a community. And we also, that would help as well. And we also know that whole, that whole west side now is slowly becoming more and more residential. So we're going to see a demand in that area as well. So it could be very, very productive.
Could you just ballpark what the excavation costs might be? I mean, how much difference we might see in cost?
Well, I'm hesitant to come up with any numbers. But, you know, I think certainly the Superior site is way more expensive because you actually have to build a parking structure. And a parking structure could be anywhere from about, I'd say with retaining walls, about $6 to $8 million on top of the building.
The excavation.
The building costs would be fairly similar, the same size, same footprint, same programs. The difference on the 16th Street parcel is that you do, you're able to do surface parking.
Right. But then you'd, we also have, you'd have to count in the benefits that we feel with the bridges at Superior. Okay, thanks.
So that's really what I have for you, and I'd love to hear some input from yourselves and the community.
All right. Comments from the council?
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
As the new kid on the block, I just want to remark that I feel almost like Moses on this one, although my trek hasn't been nearly as long. Within the first year or first month of being sworn in, I started to go out to the community. And the one thing I kept hearing from the folks on the west side was, we love the Oasis Center, we love the Newport Coast Community Center, but we need one of those over here, repeatedly, over and over and over. And so what I started to do was go out and visit with folks in the community more and more. Our friends at Hoag have been very generous with their thoughts, their times, their assets, to see if there was partnership there. And as it turns out, there will be programming partnerships available to us. But from that land thing, as I keep saying, that wise philosopher Will Rogers said, they're just not making more of that stuff. We need to look at sites on our own. And unfortunately, in West Newport, there's not many of them. I think that after, and we have looked at about seven different locations, either reusing existing facilities or partnering with Hoag on some of their buildings. And these are the two that rise like cream to the top. There are benefits to both, there are impediments to both. And I think what I have asked just as recently as this weekend, as I was visiting with my friends in Newport Shores, I think that it really comes down to hearing what the people in West Newport are interested in and what they want to see. I am very excited about this. I was just speaking with the members of the aquatic community on the west side, and they are very interested in seeing that we augment our aquatic facilities. This is that opportunity. We can do much here. We have the resources available to us at this time. And I think now's the time to get moving on this. So I want to thank staff for working with council on this. And I'm looking forward to the council's direction as we move forward. But move forward we shall.
Other council comments? Councilman Hen?
Yeah, I, it seems to me, first off, I think either site, I think, is a solution that could be executed. As I look at it, I, the synergies in this coast and Superior site are so strong with regard to Sunset Ridge Park, Sunset View Park, sort of a, more of a feeling of being in Newport Beach and in the mix, if you will, in Newport Beach. And also, the potential for partnering with Hoag. I think it goes beyond the access road. I think it goes to programming, perhaps programming in both directions, at Hoag as well as programming in our facility for wellness and seniors and that sort of thing. So the one issue, though, that, and so I, my leaning would be the coast and Superior site. But the one issue that we would need to vet is the cost issue. And so my suggestion would be focus on the coast and Superior site for now to vet out the cost more, you know, the cost differential more carefully, I guess, is what I would suggest. And then come back for another crack, another bite at the apple here to decide. And in the meantime, we can have a look at our facilities financing plan and come back with a view of that, too, in terms of capacity to execute.
Councilman Selig?
Thank you. Yeah, I think that we ought to, you know, listen to the folks in the, in the west side and the peninsula as to where they would, where they would prefer. I'm almost guessing it would be the Superior and Coast Highway site, just for its convenience and proximity. And as Councilmember Hen said, I think that, you know, that we should move ahead and investigate that site. We need to take a look at, take a look at the cost and how it fits in, fits in the budget. I think it's really a cool plan and a, and a great concept. Steve wouldn't do a guess at the cost, so I'm going to do it. Just my napkin analysis is the parking structure would be about $9 million, the community center, $10 million, $2 million in extra cost for grading and retaining walls, the pool's about a million, $2 million in landscaping, and then $4 million for the bridges at $2 million a pop. So that's about $28 million. So it's a significant cost, but, you know, if the value's there and it's something that fits into our financing plan, that, you know, we really, you know, should take a look at it and move ahead if it's possible.
Are there council comments?
Yeah, I think both sites have promise, and certainly doing something this takes a lot of energy. So that's great. The newer people are really engaged and ready to drive it. So that's great. And I would look to what the community preferences and feedbacks are, maybe have some workshops, or really engage the community and see what they think, and keep in mind to the cost as well.
Are there council comments? If not, then we'll turn it to the public. Anybody in the public likes to speak on this topic?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is George Schroeder, and I live on the corner of 35th and Balboa. I've heard it said that both sites are good sites. I have a different opinion. One site is a good site, and the other side is an extremely poor site. Based upon where I live, the obvious conclusion would be, I prefer the Coast Highway and Superior site because I could walk through it or ride my bicycle. But I will tell you that because I have thought about this a lot, that site is an extremely poor site for lots of reasons. Let me begin with just saying that this last Sunday, I was walking my dog. I have people pull over the car and ask me, is there any place around here I could park? It was 85 degrees at the beach in March. If you build that site with a 300 parking site location there, in July, August, and September, the parking structure will be full of people using the beach. The people on the peninsula who would like to go up to a community center and do some jazzercise, at the 16th Street location, we can drive there and have an open parking lot. Okay, there is never enough parking at the beach for three or four months a year. Okay, so I'm extremely concerned about that. Also, I will say with the Sunset Ridge site park, the problem with that park is at the Coastal Commission, we have the adjacent property owners next door coming there and complaining. If you go to the Superior site, and there are reasonable complaints to be heard by the people who live in the condos behind that, putting a, four pickleball sites on the rooftop below their condos, that's an extremely loud and exciting game. They have to deal with the code generation plan at Hoag right now to, to that, to those residents in the condos, just doesn't make sense. And then also, with the general plan update that we're going to vote on in September, it's going to tell us that that intersection will be a stressed intersection, that traffic is going to go up. To put, it's just a poor location to get in and out of. There'll be a right out and a right in on Superior Avenue. Everybody who leaves on Superior Avenue is going to go up to Tyco Greville where there are 450 residents in Newport Crest and 150 across the street. They're going to be waiting to turn left, and there's going to be people stacked to make U-turns to leave, and they won't be able to get in and out. The location on 16th Street, it's flat. You have ADA problems on the Superior site going up and down the hill. Okay, to me, yeah, it looks attractive until you really think about it and analyze it. So yes, it might be easier for me to run my bike to. But again, the, if you built the community center in Newport Coast on Ocean Avenue in Crowe, Hunter, Del Mar, where everybody wanted to go to the beach to come and use the parking, you would have a community center that people could not use. So please, and if you want to solve the Sunset Ridge Park, build the bridge over Superior Avenue so the people who use that parking lot, just build that, you know, bridge. But don't use that enticement to sell you on this site.
Thank you. Please, come forward.
I think, first of all, I want to thank you for considering putting something in the West Newport.
Do we have your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Kenny Joe Rizzo, and I live in Newport Shores. I wanted to thank you for even considering this. I'm so excited. We're now coming to be part of Newport, I do believe. I believe the gentleman has a good point on the parking. I think that parking lot at Superior will be fabulous for the beachgoers. I don't think, as a senior citizen, I would have much luck fighting for a parking spot if I wanted to go to the senior citizen center on the weekend. I'm not a finance person, but it does seem like that the one on 16th Street has a better potential for less money and more building, because you're not going to have to do all that excavating of the land and the bridges. Now, if you wanted to do parking and bridges for the theater down on the peninsula, that might be a good source for that. But for us who want a facility where we could go take tai chi and do pickleboard or whatever, I think this is a much better place, the one in the back. It's flat to begin with, it's got beautiful, I drove over there today, and I'm very excited about it. And thank you all.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Mayor Rush and Councilpersons, my name is Mike Johnson, and I've been around this town for a long time, over 50 years. I've served on a lot of boards of homeowners associations. I've been involved with the West Newport Beach Association. I've been on the Commission, Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission. I've been around and I've involved a lot of time to try to do something to bring some attention to West Newport. Thank you for giving all of this attention that you're doing today. We are really appreciative. I'm going to, however, have some criticisms with the two sites cited. I think that when we were talking about losing our civic center, where it's been for years, one of the things that was passed by us, by those that met with us, is that we could probably be incorporated when they move the police station over to the maintenance yard. That's, I'll ignore that. That made a lot of sense, particularly because our meetings once a month are at night, and we like the comfort of being near a PlayStation. Where we're going now in the old City Hall, it's not so comfortable at night because of the dark. I'm grateful for our new daylight savings. But getting back to the sites themselves, I like the concept of that three-story parking garage. And as said before, I think it will be well-used, it's convenient to the beach. It also is helping to protect this huge investment that we've made in Sunset Park. Without a bridge across near that parking structure, I think there's going to be a lot of people that don't use Sunset Ridge because it's so difficult to get to. The other thing that I've determined is if we had a bridge that went over by this proposed parking structure, it's about 400 feet. If, on the other hand, we put the bridge down at the intersection, which is one of the busiest in the town, we're going to have about 1,300 feet to go from the parking structure down to the intersection, raise up to get across that 30-foot-high bridge. I think the bridge should be up higher, but not to interfere with the views from Villa Balboa and the other people that are coming down the highway. As far as 16th Street is concerned, that is really a manufacturing commercial area, and it's not very friendly for what's being proposed. And it is at the top end across the street is Costa Mesa. I like the concept of something that is more central, and that's why I like the concept that was run past us before, of putting our community center somewhat similar to the Newport Coast, in that maintenance yard, which is convenient to everybody and they know where it is. So thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to come speak?
Good evening. Laurie Morris, West Newport. Thank you for considering all of this. We certainly appreciate it. I have to say that I would be in favor of the 16th Street project because where, if you do put something as large as this community center right there at the corner of PCH and Superior, it is going to be a parking nightmare. We are all in favor of actually, you know, having a new community center. That's great. But to put it there, to excavate like you're going to, to put those bridges in, it's, I don't think that's a good idea. The bridges, especially for the view plane, I have a problem with that. I think there's something else needs to be worked out. If you put the community center at 16th Street, you have all the land in the world to work with, you don't have a large excavation, you have all the parking to work with. And my idea would be, and I've thought about this a lot, is leave PCH and Superior, since you're going to be building so much here at Sunset Ridge Park. Right now, it is really a view plane. People come to watch the sunset, and that's been that way. You drive up and down there at Sunset, people are just stacked up there watching the sunset. You could put parking there, $300,000. You could put parking there, 300 parking, put greenery on top, put a dog park in there, make it user-friendly, but don't build on that, overbuild that, because coming off the peninsula, you're going to see this huge community center, Sunset Ridge Park, and eventually Banning Ranch, in one way or another, small or big, it's going to come into fruition, and we're going to have all that issue as far as traffic concerns and that. And I don't want more traffic concerns when it comes to this community center. 16th Street incorporates all of that. I think, drive two minutes up the hill, you're there. I don't think that's a big inconvenience for anyone. As for the other part where the police station may go, I'm all for that. I think the police station should be closer to West Newport. As we all know, we are one of the biggest users of the police department. But that said, if that is the case, no jail ever. That needs to be written into this, if that goes there, I want no jail. If you do that, you're going to kill the peninsula. So put everything you need for the police department there, use it for a yard, use it for parking, you know, that's a great idea, everything that's being proposed, but no jail. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I feel compelled to comment one thing, that Fashion Island seems to be doing relatively well these days, and there's a jail in Fashion Island, so. Please, whoever is next.
My name is Gina Shealy, I'm Gina Sheley Leslie. I live in Newport Shores. As I said this weekend to Mr. Petros, I would be extremely happy if you built this in either place. I did go down to 16th Street today, and yet, I'm serious at working out, and I took bootcamp at Newport Coast, and it was so nice in the evening because it was peaceful, and it was quiet, and just to be laying down there, and I can't see that on Superior, driving through that place twice a day and with odds going up. And I can see why you want to do this as a continuation, but I also would think 16th Street would be a much better place for somebody that's really serious and wants to work that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this topic? Please come forward.
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I live in the west half of Newport Beach. I do not live this far west, but I do have some thoughts about what we heard this afternoon. My first thought, first thing we heard was about the consolidation of these two yards that the city has, which seems to be predicated on the assumption of continued outsourcing. As I understand it, our desire for outsourcing is motivated by our pension problem that we have, and at least if, something to think about is some future council might eventually solve the pension problem, and it would once again be most cost-effective and efficient for the city to be itself providing these services, and a future council might then be looking for a place for yards for these purposes. Second, we saw a graphic about the moving of the police station, and we heard verbally that the new police station was going to be bigger than the old one, but I'm sure it must have struck you as it struck me. It certainly looked a lot smaller on the slide we saw, so I don't know if it's expected to be a high-rise tower or what. Third thought is wherever the community center goes, it appears that staff is very much oriented towards making it strongly tilted towards sports activities, which seem to me to be competing with private fitness centers. And I would point out that Costa Mesa has a very successful and well-used community center in their Lions Park, that as far as I know, has no fitness center at all. And among things that the West side is lacking, obviously is a library facility, and perhaps a more broader thought of what a community center should be besides a fitness center needs to be going into this thinking. Next thought I have is in the staff report and in the presentation, we heard about the good, bad, the ugly, and the problem that both of these would need coastal approval. I would, again, like to suggest, I don't think that demonizing the Coastal Commission is really productive to anybody, just as you have a public duty to perform the things that you do, they have a public duty to perform theirs. And I don't think making them sound evil is a good idea. Next to last, I noticed in the staff report, maybe I read it wrong, it struck me rather odd emphasizing that this is the first time this information, or nearly the first, has been presented to the public. The staff has been thinking about this, I guess, for a couple of years, and so I find it odd that the public has not been knowing about what's going on. I don't know what the penchant for secrecy is, if we think the Russians are going to get wind of what we're doing and copy it at the Black Sea or what. And finally, as far as getting people to cross Superior Street, I would just like to suggest get people to cross the street, bridges are one way. Other cities have used underpasses, which are certainly safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of staff, I'm Dr. Georgina Takamoto, and I live in Newport Crest. And I don't want to beat a dead horse when the horse has died, it is time to dismount. But the congestion and the traffic is a great concern to me. As you know, Superior is one of the access routes to Hoag emergency, and the sirens and getting the vehicles up there. I'm thinking about traffic going south on Superior. How do they access the parking structure? Go down, make a U-turn, you know, and I think the comments that have been made about the beach parking, we lived that all the time, from Labor Day, well, Memorial Day to Labor Day, and people coming in and taking up all our spaces. I do think that's what's going to happen with that parking structure, and how you can monitor that, I don't know. We have to pay guards to come and sit to the entrance there on Tycon Nuroga because of folks encroaching on that. The new park will be wonderful. I was concerned initially. I'm a former school superintendent, and moving kids around across intersections can make you crazy, but I think the bridge is a good idea to keep those pedestrians off of that, out of that intersection. That is a very, very busy intersection and very awkward. Now, as you know, the roads are not straight, and with the curving and trying to see what's going on, it's very, very difficult there. And so, even though it seems like a sexy parcel, certainly with Hoag right there doing interaction, but you know, that's not that far away. I teamed with hospitals in my school districts, I teamed with translational genomics projects, and they didn't have, you know, they didn't have to, they weren't in our backyard. But I think it's wonderful to start building the bridges with Hoag Hospital now, and the teaming with the courses and the Vital Aging Project, probably a lot could go on with them too, but the other parcel, again, is flat, but my first thought was parking, and you've already got that, the parking there, really, you've got the flats, that structure for that. And it's not that much of an industrial zone, you know, I checked out, I was over at Coast College, and so, you know, the access in there is not like you're going through downtown Detroit where I'm from. It's, you know, very hospitable area, so I would urge you, and I know this is preliminary in your gathering information, but I think as you really start looking at the traffic issues and the moving people around safely, and that is a tsunami, which caught my attention when the sign went out, tsunami evacuation route on Superior. It's just very congested. As you know, this is one of the only accesses directly to the PCH. Besides, you know, when people come off to 55, they're smart enough, they jump over to Superior, the wise there on Newport, all the way in. So, you know, I know council will give due diligence on that, and it is wonderful that you're incorporating other, my time's up. We used to have a red light, yellow light, one minute left, red light, you're done. But thank you for your work on this, and it's a great idea.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak? Please, we're running very late, so if we could be right in line if we're going to speak.
I'll make this quick. Cindy Kohler, West Newport. I would encourage you to look at the top lot. I know this looks great on the corner of Superior and PCH, but there's things I want you to consider. Mike Mueller's trying to get in Banning Ranch, we're going to have a boutique hotel, I guess, right down the street, so you've got all that traffic, you've got the traffic from Banning Ranch if the residential goes in. You've got a 300-car parking structure. I wish Jay Johnson was here, because anytime you have a parking structure, you've got crime. If you pull the police logs from that corner, pull the police logs from that corner and see what happens on that corner all the time. That's just going to be a draw for us. We've already got congestion. As you come down Superior anytime during the summer, it's, we're backed up. You can't cross Pacific Coast Highway. So where are those 300 cars, plus our new park, plus Banning Ranch, plus a hotel? That's what I'd like you to think about, and keep that an open space, maybe a dog park, a view park, if you want to tie that in with the other parks, but not more congestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jim Miller, President of Newport Island. I guess the council needs to determine what most residents would like, vast majority. We can be vociferous, and we can be really loud, and we can support arguments on both sides, reasonable people. The main thing, whichever way we decide to go, everybody's going to be very excited. We've been waiting for this, like Tony said, for, I've been around doing this stuff for 20 years, and we've needed these kind of facilities in West Newport. No matter what you do, you're all going to get praise, all right? You can't lose. All right. Now, as far as the best place for the park.
And we've heard that before, but go ahead.
Yeah, but I'm not running for anything. But the best place for the park, we've heard arguments on both sides. I think lawsuits can involve, or arguments on both sides. But if you look for the majority of people in West Newport, what do they want? That little square rate, that little triangle rate, there is Newport Island. All summer long, there's kids that play in the park, we have barbecues, we have hundreds of people in and around Newport Island there, all of which like something close to them. We can walk or ride our bikes to this close place. Close, we can see it, our kids can go there. Number one, however, you got to have a bridge over that highway. That's got to be part of it, and it's going to be part of it for us to use. My wife walks there every day to go to Hoag. Partner with Hoag is just a wonderful idea. The bridges make people so excited. I've talked to many, many people. Everyone I've talked to would love the. Our disadvantages, it's close, we see it, we can get there. Up on the other edge of town, we could put it back where Oasis is. It might be cheaper in Riverside, but it's too far away. They're not going to walk there, and they're not going to ride their bikes. They don't see it. That's my two cents. I'll be happy to poll close residents and give you an idea of what the poll will be. I suspect about 90% will go this site, and about 10% will be the other site, and both will be reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further speakers?
Mayor and Councilman, my name is Sharon Bowles. I'm President of West Newport Beach Association. We took a very quick poll, it's only been 36 hours, it's running toward PCH. I'm going to change hats and say, as a member of the Newport Crest Board of Directors, people in Newport Crest are not happy to have another building or another traffic draw right in our area. I love the idea of 16th Street, the ocean views are spectacular, it is serene, all those things that have been said before. The last thing I want to say is, it hasn't been a secret. I've known about this. Mike Han has come to our board meetings, several of you have talked to us. It's been in the community of West Newport Beach. Thank you. Whatever you do is going to be great.
Thank you. Well, is that perfectly clear, staff?
I think we probably want to have another discussion about it, just to get, generate even more feedback. This was very helpful today from what you said, as well as the public.
I think if we could, I really appreciated Councilman Hen's comments, and I think that if we could get just some meat on the bones about some cost differentials, that's really going to drive the discussion as well.
And maybe between now and then, if we can figure out a few forums to get a little better grip on the public's view of the alternatives, that would probably be a good thing to.
One other comment that I might make too, Mr. Mayor, is that I hope there's an appreciation that this is now finally ripe for discussion, and the discussion is happening, not from this dais, but with the community. We asked for you to come out and give us your thoughts. I am so pleased by the number of emails that I've received of folks who are interested in this, and I am ever grateful for all of you who have come out and expressed yourselves, whatever side of this is, because at the end of the day, I want to make sure that this is what we agree is in our best interest. And so I want to thank you for joining us this evening.
And I want to thank you for allowing us to move on to public comments, including comments on the closed-door session. Are there any public comments at this point in time?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I realize the hour is late, but I'd like to use this opportunity for a non-agenda comment to try to encourage you, in your endeavors, to take whatever time is necessary to produce good rules and legislation that make sense in plain English. Contrary to what you may have been assured, the intent of badly-written rules is not magically clear to lawyers, and they have real practical consequences resulting in pointless litigation and causing grief to those you were elected to represent. As an example, this afternoon, in the Superior Court in Santa Ana, there is a case generated by badly-written legislation recently approved by this council. You may recall that in January last year, you approved a number of changes to the harbor code, which the city attorney said were necessary to implement your new fee scheme for the private docks. When a small part of that code was reviewed at mid-year, Councilwoman Gardner noticed a new sentence that had been added that could be read to exempt commercial docks from the requirements related to anything having to do with the adjoining property. And although the city attorney assured her that that had never been the intent, one owner of a commercial dock had already asserted his exemption under that code, and that is the subject of this afternoon's lawsuit. In December, to improve the city's chances of winning, the city attorney reluctantly recommended that you add a second sentence, which you were told would clarify the intent of the first sentence, even though to a reader of plain English, it was equally opaque. While apparently judges are no better at reading this garbage than we are, or at least in his preliminary ruling, the judge said he could make no sense at all out of either the original sentence or the supposed clarification, and in the end, he had to rely on this final staff report, which offered no clear explanation of what the section was about, but said it was not intended to allow this person to prevail. So what looks like garbage is garbage, and I say this because you have before you on tonight's agenda, after your very brief closed session, several lengthy legal-looking documents, a new trash code, an agreement in concept with the Theater Foundation and some resolution that's yet to be made connected with that, and legal guidelines for the use of Newport Beach TV that have not received any independent scrutiny and will likely be adopted with most cursory of review. I certainly will not have time to tell you in three minutes what I think is wrong with them, but I can assure you, they are even less ready for prime time than was the dock fee code. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further public comments? If not, Mr. City, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was looking the wrong way.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, hello, council. My name is Blake Hockemurray. I'm a local Newport Beach resident. I live down on 36th Street, and the issue I wanted to address today is the vacant building at the end of the Newport Beach Pier. Basically, I know the council has made a decision to carry forward with the restaurant, and I have an alternative concept that I think is a better use of the existing structure and would be a better benefit to our community and the Balboa residents. I have a quick one-page deliverable, if you wouldn't mind me just passing along. Basically, I want to give you a quick background on myself. I grew up in Newport, went to junior high, high school, and went to elementary school at Lincoln Elementary. I was in the junior lifeguard program for five years. I've been a lifeguard, seasonal ocean lifeguard for 10 years, and basically, you know, I've lived here all my life. I live down on 36th Street on the peninsula currently. I work in Irvine, California for a commercial real estate lender. I work in Irvine, California for a commercial real estate lender. I went to college at USC, and I studied business, I was real estate finance and entrepreneurship concentration. Basically, the kind of picture I'm trying to paint for you is that I'm kind of the epitome of your customer down on the Balboa Peninsula. You've got tons of, you know, young bachelors, you've got UCI students, Chapman students, OCC students, all that live in that direct market, in that community. And there's just a few things I've noticed while living down there. There's a huge and tremendous focus of the surrounding community on fitness, and, you know, with the boardwalk, the beach, the sunset, everything, people are focused really on working out and exercising, and, you know, the motivation to live some of those healthier lifestyles. One of the other things I've noticed is there's a direct need for more fitness centers, and I think that's apparent with some of the other development ideas that are, you guys are considering. And as a solution to that problem, I think the vacant building at the end of Newport Pier is a perfect location for a new concept in mind, and that is for Pier Fit Fitness Studio, basically focusing on yoga and Spain classes, not unlike, you know, businesses like Yaz or Orange Theory, which are all located not on the peninsula. I think there's only actually two centers currently, and I think, you know, it's Balboa Fitness, and there's Curl Fitness, those are tucked back by Lido Island. Basically, using the structure for that use would fill a direct need, and, you know, someone pointed parking, parking being an issue, but the way I see it, people want to work out in the mornings, before work, before school, or after work, after school. And as a lifeguard, I've spent tons of time in that area, that's where Newport Beach Lifeguards is headquartered, and, you know, I can assure you, early in the morning, that's when, you know, some of the only times you can find those parking spots. I know I'm out of time. I think it'd be a great benefit to the community. You know, you wouldn't be competing with existing restaurants and businesses in the area. I think you'd be able to encourage more healthy, you know, kind of attitude to the public, and the financials are there, and they make sense.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Interesting concept. You present yourself well. Any further public comments? If not, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, just briefly, before I get to the closed-session agenda announcement, the case that Mr. Mosher is referring to is the Valet versus City of Newport Beach, or the hearing on that petition for writ of mandate was today. And I think that he's mischaracterized what the judge's tentative ruling was in that matter. The tentative ruling was that Mr. Valet did, was required to obtain a permit from the city that goes to the Harbor Commission, and that the section of the code, 1760060, didn't exempt him from that requirement. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has regarding that matter. If not, I'll get to the closed-session announcement. The city council adjourned a closed session to discuss those items set forth on the regular agenda under item 2A through B, which includes the following: meeting with labor negotiators Dave Kiff and Terry Cassidy in regards to labor negotiations with all represented employees; meeting with Dave Kiff and Rob Hewson to discuss real property negotiations with E&amp;B Natural Resources and Oxy USA Inc. related to 5810 West Coast Highway; meeting with Pat Thomas to discuss real property negotiations with Lido Pacific LLC related to Assessor Parcel numbers 423102-3 and 423-382-05. Mayor Hill has informed me that he'll be recusing himself from the discussion of real property negotiations with E&amp;B Natural Resources and Oxy USA based on a conflict of interest related to property ownership within 500 feet of the subject property. And out of abundance of caution, Councilmember Hen will be recusing himself from the discussion of real property negotiations with Lido Pacific LLC because he has a business relationship with Viola Docks.
Thank you. We adjourn to closed session.